Motion to open the Zaring Board of Appeals meeting.
Turn your mic on.
It's on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Um, what do you want to do first?
Well, actually, we can just do CMR for us.
Motion to open case number 4309.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to continue case number 4309 to August 29th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Huh?
These mics close to you.
Oh.
Gary, you have to really... You've...
Bad mic.
You need to... You need to close up to the mic.
Um, open case number 4307.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Crimmens.
Good evening, I'm Deb Morse with Hebrew Senior Life.
Mr. Crimmens, you know, ready for you.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Uh, for the record, Attorney Barry Crimmens of 909 Washington Street in Stoughton, here on behalf of the applicant, Hebrew Senior Life. Uh, along with me tonight, here in the meeting, is Ms. Deb Morse from Hebrew Senior Life, also Mr. Kenneth Hartfield, who is with DeMello... DeMello Schaefer, our project architect, sorry for that feedback. Um, our project engineer, Paula Thompson, from Beals and Thomas, is on remotely. And is there anyone else from our team, Deb? Okay. So this is a continuation of the public hearing for the comprehensive permit for Hebrew Senior Life for the property at 338 Canton Street in Stoughton. Uh, what I'd like to do very briefly is just bring the board up to date on what has happened since we were last before you on May 2nd, uh, when the hearing was continued, I guess technically the last week, and then they got further continued to, uh, tonight's meeting. Um, since that time, there's... There's been several developments, um, not the least of which is a major, um, modification of the project from what it was originally presented to you, basically as a six-story project containing 200 units. Uh, it'll... It is now proposed to be a three-story project containing 96 units. And Kenneth, uh, can speak to, uh, the architectural design and the changes, uh, in the... In the buildings, uh, et cetera momentarily. Um, we were... Since we were here on... On May 2nd, uh, at the May 20th, um, annual town meeting session, uh, we got approved for the CPC, uh, funding of $1.3 million. Uh, that was a reduction from the original amount requested of 2.3 million, when, once again, the project was proposed as a 200-unit project. Uh, subsequent to that meeting, on... On May... On May 20th, the... At the planning board meeting on June 13th, uh, the planning board endorsed the A&R Plan, uh, that had been previously... Uh, I believe you folks had seen the plan, uh, but it had not been endorsed as of the May 2nd meeting. That was endorsed at the June 13th meeting of the planning board, uh, and, uh, I recorded that today at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. Um, I was hoping that... That little trial that was over there, what would be done by today, so I wouldn't run into the crowd, but, uh, needless to say, it was still going on. Um, with that, uh, I think what I'd like first is, uh, to let Deb make any comments that she would care to make, and then we'll turn it over to Ken to talk about the change, uh, in... In the buildings. Deb?
Thank you, Barry. Unless the committee has any questions or information they'd like, I would like to hand it over to Kenneth for a 10-minute, um, design update.
Can you talk into the mic a little bit?
Sure. Unless the... The committee has any questions they'd like answered now, or in other information, my preference would be to hand it over to Kenneth to do a 10-minute design presentation, just so you can see how the building has progressed since you last saw it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kenneth Hartfield, uh, Associate Principal with DeMillo Schaefer Architects in Boston. Let me go to the next slide. Uh, the site at 338 Canton Street, as Mr. Crimmens said, uh, just west of the town center of Stoughton. Large parcel, uh, bound, uh, at the intersection of Canton and Simpson Streets. Next. Uh, as you know, the site is encumbered by a large, uh, portion of wetlands that runs north and south, uh, throughout the whole parcel, which really kind of backed us in to, uh, a smaller buildable area at the intersection of Canton and Simpson Streets on the upper right-hand corner of, uh, of the site. Uh, this is our preliminary site plan. Uh, you can see the blue wetlands, uh, kind of in light blue on the left-hand side, that comes into the site fairly substantially. Uh, the site plan really hasn't changed, uh, since the previous submission. Uh, like Mr. Crimmens said, uh, the main, uh, impact was the reduction, uh, in height of the building from six stories down to three. But there is, uh, uh, the building is, uh, in two, uh, wings, uh, that open up to the wetlands and to the south, so that we can take advantage of ample, uh, south sunlight and also, uh, nice views out across the wetlands. And then, uh, parking kind of wraps around, uh, adjacent to the... The two major streets with entrances off of both Canton Street and Simpson Street. Next. Uh, this is the first floor, uh, plan, uh, the... Uh, there are, uh, units on the ground floor in blue, and there's some, uh, public, uh, resident amenity space and, uh, in orange, and then also, uh, large, uh, multi-purpose room, uh, at the... The top of the... The page here on the right-hand side. And that... That program has not changed, uh, since the previous submission. Next. And then the two, uh, upper floors pretty much stack. There's a secondary entrance on the second floor from the parking area on the right-hand side, uh, so that those residents don't have to walk kind of around to the front of the building, they can, uh, enter directly off the parking. Uh, in the previous submission, this, uh, building was going to be envisioned or constructed in two phases, uh, but, uh, reducing that down to three stories, this will be now at, uh, built in one phase. Uh, it made no sense then to have, uh, double banks of, uh, elevators, so we moved all the elevators to, uh, the one, uh, kind of wing on the right, and then attached the two wings with a bridge connector. Next. And this is the third floor, which, uh, pretty much stacks. The, uh... You can see the, uh... This is an aerial view, uh, from that corner of Canton Street, which is running on the lower right-hand side, and Simpson, which runs up the left-hand side of the... The page. The reduction in height, uh, kind of led us also to introduce a gabled roof form, kind of on the portions of the building that face, uh, the public streets, uh, to lend some residential, uh, character to the building, and then also hide some, uh... Some of the rooftop equipment that will be kind of toward the back of those... Of those wings. Next. So this is a... An eye-level view of, uh, of the project from that intersection, uh, Canton Street and Simpson Street. You can see the secondary entrance on the left-hand side in that kind of blue box. And the next slide shows a corresponding view of the previous submission, so, uh, if you can... Want to toggle back and forth, or go... Well, that's okay. You just see the... The big difference between those, uh... Those two, uh, kind of aspects. Six stories and then down to three. You can go next. And this is, uh, the main entrance of the building off of, uh, Canton Street. There's a large front porch that connects these two, kind of, uh, uh, blue and rust volumes. And the main entrance is right behind the... The decorative trees. Uh, but you see the gabled roof forms here that kind of run the length of the building. And then the next view is the... The previous six-story, uh, submission. You can go next. This is, uh, working down, uh, Canton Street. Next. And this is down, uh, as you approach, uh, heading toward, uh, the town center along Canton Street. The... The service station would be kind of behind your right shoulder. Next. And that... That would... Is the... The previous six-story version. This is a view of the back of the building, which, uh, uh, is not in the public way, but it shows it, uh, opening up, uh, to the wetlands. Next. And, uh, there is some, uh... Some resident, uh, amenity spaces outside, a nice terrace and pergola, and then some, uh, balconies that, uh, are off of, uh, floor lounges on each floor also, which offer really nice views and, uh... And communal space. And that's it.
So, Mr. Chairman, that... That represents the, you know, obviously, the major changes, the, um... The site aspects. Uh, we received the technical review memo, uh, prepared by the Assistant Town Engineer, Mr. Horstfall, along with the Town Planner, Mr. Roth. Uh, our, uh, Civil Engineer, Paula Thompson, who once again is on the meeting, uh, met with Bill and Craig, uh, last week to review those items, and we anticipate, uh, presenting responses, uh, to them as of next week, I believe we said, Paula. Uh, Paula, do you want to address any aspects of that?
I can say, um, overall, we have agreed to do any of the comments and questions from the Engineering Department, as well as the Water Department. Um, I'm... Like you said, I met with the Town Planner and the Engineer yesterday, and we talked through them. We talked about specific items and what they were looking for, for those specific items, so we have good direction on what they're looking for. Um, most of the items can be addressed on this set of plans, which we plan to submit back to the ZBA next week before the holiday. Um, there are a couple of items that are longer lead and longer design, so we are... We would request those to be conditions of approval, and there's about five of them, so we will put that in our response letter. Uh, and there was one additional waiver that we will be requesting, which was part of the Board of Health comments. Uh, they had a comment that dwellings must be set two feet above the center line of the roadway, and as Canton Street and Simpson Street both slope, um, one is sloping to the west and one is sloping to the south, we won't be able to meet that regulation, which appears that it is, um, based for single-family homes, so we will be asking for a waiver on that regulation from the ZBA, so we'll be adding that to our... Our waiver table. Um, otherwise, um, we did not see any roadblocks in any of those questions or comments from planning and engineering.
And Paula, just to clarify and perhaps for the record, uh, some of the items for which we'll... That we need to address, we want them to be contingent upon approval of a building permit, not approval of the ZBA. Um, and we will... We will identify those items in our written response that you'll receive next week. Thank you.
So then, Mr. Chairman, the other outstanding item, uh, was the traffic peer review. Uh, we had presented our traffic report to the board previously. It was voted by the board at the May 2nd meeting to have GPI perform a, uh, peer review of that report. Um, we did ask, uh, because we wanted to make sure, uh, everything went okay at town meeting, which fortunately it did, and which we're very thankful for, uh, we had asked, uh, Bill to hold off and forwarding that to GPI at the time, but then once town meeting approved the funding, um, I believe shortly thereafter, the request was sent along, and the report was sent along to GPI to do their traffic peer review. I don't know if...
We also... We did an updated review... We did an updated report from Van Ness, reflecting the change in the program from 200 units to 96 units, and we sent that updated report to you as well.
So I don't know if the town yet has a sense of when they may anticipate receiving that peer review?
Um, I checked in with them, uh, earlier this week. Um, they had hoped for comments to be sent over to us by the end of this week. I don't have them as of, uh, this meeting, maybe tomorrow, but, uh, it should be someday soon, so...
Okay, great. So that, basically, Mr. Chairman, um, again reflects the, I think, the current status of where things are at, both in terms of the changes that we have made and the items that are... That are outstanding. I think what we would like to do at this point is respond to any questions, uh, that the members may have, or anybody in the audience, and then af... After that point, discuss a, uh, potential, uh, continuation date.
Questions? Uh, Neil, you have any questions?
Not at the moment.
Marguerite?
Yeah, I have a few. Um, in reading your proposal summary, um, one of the pages talked about what would be on the first floor. I think your cover letter did, and then, um, there was a narrative that talked about some other additional items that might be on the first floor, so I just wanted a confirmation of what you're planning to actually put on that first floor.
Um, with the understanding that we're still working through what the programming should be, and we want to do some further engagement with the Council of Aging in the town of Stoughton, certainly on the first floor, we will have offices for staff, we will have a multi-purpose room that we hope will be used, not just by the residents of this community, but also other seniors from Stoughton who want to participate in our programs. We intend to have a fitness space. I don't know today if that's going to be mostly used for classes or for... With a lot of fitness equipment, and we'll... We'll work that out. We're going to have, um, some sort of food service. It's not going to be any kind of restaurant or sit-down meal, but it will place... It will be a place for members of the community, and again, we hope from the larger community as well, to get a cup... Cup of coffee, something to eat, relax with their friends, um, and there'll be sort of a lobby space. We may also have space where we could have a library, and then each floor will have laundry facilities.
So you mentioned, um, a convenience store, a salon, and a mailroom as well?
Yeah, there will definitely... Sorry, there'll definitely be a mailroom. Um, the convenience store is going to be sort of the slash convenience store, place to get something to eat. That will be combined. And then I want to get back to you on whether or not there'll be a salon.
Okay. I'm sorry, these are just sort of as I went through my list, so they're haphazard, but, um, what's your plan for snow removal? I think we started to talk about this the last time. It looks like you haven't changed your parking proposal at all, or your layout, so I think there was still some concerns about where snow removal would go with that limited spacing on your parking area.
So literally where the snow would be moved to?
Yes. Um... Maybe if you could put that site plan picture up again. I was thinking more of the site plan and just the... I think it was the second...
Third slide.
Or third slide. That one. Yep.
I don't know, let me get back to you.
Okay, yeah. How many employees are you expecting to be on-site at any given time?
Probably five to six full-time employees.
And then what about any part-time employees, or anybody assisting with the public, you know, the public or group amenities?
Um, there would probably just be a... A couple of part-time people. We would have an executive director, we would have a fitness person, we would have at least one or two resident services people, and I'm thinking there would be at least three facilities people, which would include cleaners and people to do maintenance work.
And then, for instance, like someone for the cafe or convenience store?
So that would be potentially some part-time of a resident services person, because it's a great way to get to know how people are doing. We were... We also have ex... Our experience is that residents really like to volunteer and do that work, um, and we might hire a part-time senior from the town who might, so it would be a combination of that.
So at any given time, we could expect somewhere between five or 10 potential employees?
Yes, yes.
So those would take spaces away from the parking that you already have. Is that right?
I... I don't know how many of them would be driving in every day to work, but it... To the extent they had cars, we would have some employee spaces, yes.
And those are... Would be using the spaces that you're showing, or is there going to be separate employee parking?
It would be using the spaces that we're showing.
I mean, I appreciate the reduction in size, I appreciate the reduction in the number of units, but I'm still concerned with the parking situation, and especially if we're accounting for visitors, anybody who's delivering packages, it might take up spaces, employee parking, you know, um, public safety, or any other sort of medical support that might be needed for the residents. I just... I think you have a really tight space, so I think that as people come in, they could block spaces as well. Um, you go into the winter months, and you've got the snow removal question that I have. I know we had asked, and I saw it asked for in the, um, engineering comments and the town planner comments, and I want to echo, I truly think that we need to look at what your alternative plan is going to look like, and not just wait six months as you're proposing, um, to see what that really looks like, and how many spaces does that accommodate?
Um, per the request of Bill Roth, we are going to be presenting a sort of a, I think what he's calling a banked, B-A-N-K-E-D, um, parking plan for up to 50 additional spaces on land we own across the street on Simpson Street.
And then I would hope that that plan would also show the access from that parking space over to the building.
Yes, it will.
Excuse me, what did you say, 50 parking spots on the other one?
Five zero.
So...
High parking lot.
Right. On-site, we have... We have kept the 59 parking spaces, and then what Mr. Roth has asked us to do is show on land across the street on Simpson Street that we own, that we could fit another five-zero parking spaces, and we will, of course, show the access.
I'd also be interested in knowing what the build-out time for something like that would be. Again, I mean, I'm not sure I'm comfortable approving this with 59 spaces, so I'd certainly like you to consider including additional parking somehow into your proposal now.
Yeah, let us get the peer review traffic and parking studies, so that we can provide a comprehensive response to... To all of the questions and concerns that we might get.
Sure, that's fair. I just thought I'd mention that.
Yes.
Um, you mentioned that you had, and I saw, the project eligibility amendment letter that you filed. I think for the record, it would just be helpful if we know whether or not you heard back from the state.
The 15-day period came and went, and we did not hear back from the state, so according to CMR 760, we... The project eligibility approval letter issued by the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities is still in place.
Okay, thank you. I also... I don't know if you want to address this, but I saw that you had presented, and I didn't hear anything in your presentation tonight, um, something from Green Seal Environmental, LLC. I think that addressed some of the public comments, um, relating to what had happened with the Brookfield property release, so I didn't know if you wanted to add that into the record.
Thank you. Um, we did receive a request from Mr. Roth to provide a summary that was sort of accessible to the general public around the environmental conditions of the property, and so Green Seal Environmental, um, took its 1,000-page report and distilled it into a seven-page summary that, as you said, described what happened with the Brookfield site, the remediation efforts that were in place, and all of the document review that they did that resulted in their conclusion that the parcel on which we intend to develop, um, is safe for its intended residential use.
It also included a condition, which they did indicate was pretty conservative, but it suggested a condition around building a vapor barrier.
Which is included in our design.
Okay, thank you, I wasn't sure if that was there. Um, I'm not sure of the approach that you take for responding to peer... The peer review comments from the town, but I can tell you from my... From my, um, own review, it would be helpful if you could follow sort of the same numbering and let us know if you've addressed it in a plan revision, or if you're suggesting it be a proposed condition. That would just be helpful for me for tracking purposes.
That... That is our intended approach.
Okay. I assume the, um, traffic review from the fire department is... Or the police department is way... waiting on the peer review traffic report to be fully addressed? Sorry, the Sergeant O'Connor's letter?
Right. Paula, did you want to mention that?
Sure, yes, that will be in our response, but we would like to wrap that into the traffic peer review because several of his comments will likely come up from the GPI review.
The fire department letter, we had already seen, and I think you did address some of that already in some of your revisions, is that right?
That's right. And Paula, did you want to add more to that?
Yep, we will respond to those as well in our, in our letter.
I do have a question on one of those. So they mentioned, the fire department review, of course, was based on the larger building, but their roof access piece, where they said that it would be for buildings of four or more stories would require this, I just don't know this answer, but, and given the fact that you're looking for a height waiver, so I'm not sure if that's considered from a height standpoint to really be a four-story building, is that something that you need to address? So you don't have to answer that tonight, but if you can make sure that's part of your response, that would be helpful.
We're going to, we're going to route, we're going to route the plans, new plans, go over them with the fire chief again, because we realize his letter was based on the six-story building.
So I think the only other piece of information that I was given that I didn't hear you address tonight was the public letter from Louis Gido.
So we, excuse me, our response will also include information about our intention to do sort of a master plan for, for the property that we own in Stoughton.
Okay, I mean, I think it would be, as you put that response together, it would be helpful for you to identify sort of timeframes and ideas that you have. It wouldn't necessarily be something that the zoning board would take on, but it could be something that we follow or track somehow through our decision. And whatever it is that you're looking at, you know, certainly my suggestion might be that you reach out to Mr. Gido and figure out what he's thinking and see what you can collaborate on first.
On the selectmen's agenda at their last meeting, he had a request as a follow-up to the comment at town meeting, that that item be added to the town manager's sort of capital plan items for 2024, 2025. So we would anticipate working with Mr. Coulter as far as that master plan is concerned. I think the only concern we would have is, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to have that as a condition of the comprehensive permit, because that's, amongst other things, it's much broader and it relates to property that's not part of the comprehensive permit property. But we're certainly committed, you know, we vindicate our commitment to do so, and we'll honor that commitment, but we just don't think the comprehensive permit should have that as a condition.
I mean, I think that's fair. I wouldn't necessarily think about conditioning it, but, you know, my familiarity with comprehensive permit decisions is that they indicate various documents that are received by the board and considered, and so my hope would be that there might be some type of a agreement letter or plan letter that we could include reference to, just to show that, you know, we listened to the comment that was given to us and we took it into consideration and worked with you to address it. So I don't have any other questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions.
I got a bunch of questions, she asked them all.
No, that's good.
I realize that we went over a few of them, and I know that you're telling us that there'll be another letter coming telling us about all these different things. One of the, one of my concerns is, is everybody else's concerns of parking. And 109 spots, that's, will probably be pretty good for the, the people that are in the, going to be living in this, you're going to have, is it like West Roxbury, you'll have a bus that takes them around to some of the different spots instead of having cars, like the MBTA ride, whatever you want to call it?
Yes, and sort of to one of Ms. Mitchell's points, we, we are, of the 59 onsite parking spaces, four of them are accessible. All four of them are accessible for a van, and so we will likely have a van, and that is going to take up one of the parking spaces, just as she had mentioned about employee parking. And the idea is that van would take people to where they needed to go, so that we could, what we experience is often at many of our communities is, sometimes people have cars, but they never use them. They never, ever take them out of this parking, they never use them, ever. And so what we want to try and encourage here is, if you have a car, but you think you're never going to use it, let's think about another way for you, for us to help you get to where you need to go. I mean, literally, like years of snowstorms, right, with the cars never moved, ever. And, you know, why? And so we want to really come at this with an eye towards, how can we help people get where they want to go? Because they're absolutely have places to go, and they need to be able to get to these places on time and safely. But is there a way to do that without them having their own car that they never move? And so we really want to explore that and think about that with you and with your traffic and peer review study. And we need to, we understand, we need to balance that with making sure that emergency vehicles have full and complete access, that we're not running into parking problems down the road if someone wants to come and visit their parent or grandparent. So we're aware of all of the challenges, and we come to this from a place of deep experience in how seniors in our communities sort of manage their own transportation needs. In Roselandale, that's really a healthcare facility, so the parking there is really about family members, physicians, nurses, emergency ambulances coming and going, and staff. The, the patients who reside in our Roselandale facility, they're there for like rehabilitation purposes, or they're there for long-term care needs, and they're not driving.
If I could just follow up briefly on that, Mr. Chairman, the demographics and the programs that we'll be providing at this, at this facility are not unlike the situation that we have with the housing authority in our developments in town. There are many more units at each one of those sites than there are cars. If you were to drive through La Civita Court, if you were to drive through Stoughton Memorial Village, you know, you'll see many open parking spaces that simply are not utilized because largely, you know, folks find that for whatever reason, it's just not necessary for them to have a car. So I think it's a little different analysis than if we were talking about, you know, a large multifamily development with a younger population with more vehicles, or a family population with more vehicles. So I think, you know, as Deb said, their, their experience, which is extensive, kind of gives them a good basis of knowledge to understand really how many parking spaces are they truly going to need. That's not said to, you know, disregard the earlier comments, as we said, we're going to provide that concept plan for the, for the area across the street, but we, we're very confident that taking everything into account, you know, families, visitors, employees, et cetera, we'll have, we'll have more than enough parking spaces at this site. And the van, you know, it will not be unlike, the Council on Aging has a van, you know, that they keep up with the senior center, and they bring folks to the senior center for programs, they take folks to doctor's appointments, things of that nature. So ours would be very much along those same lines.
Everyone asked so many questions, I kind of only have one left to ask. You know, we're talking about parking spaces, we're talking about not using cars, we're talking about, you know, how people get around, you know, and then I was kind of looking through the letters from the various town departments, and, you know, I saw the fire letter, for instance, but I also saw the police letter, and in here there was one concern noted around pedestrian and traffic safety, right, one about including a traffic signal at the intersection, increasing pedestrian precautions such as flashing pedestrian signal, warning signage, sidewalk installation. I mean, what are the thoughts on these points, and will we see any of this in your, your next iteration?
Yeah, we, we intend to respond to all of those comments in the memo that you'll get from us next week.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have no further questions.
I'd like to add to that, if I could. When we receive GPI's comment letter, we fully expect that it will address safety concerns at the intersection of Canton and Simpson Street. That's been a concern of ours. The police department's letter talks about lighting conditions and signage and things like that for safety. They will evaluate whether or not a full traffic signal is warranted at this location. My sense overall is that it will not be. The town is currently looking at signalizing Canton and School Street as a masti OT tip project, and we're currently under construction with a signal over at Tosca Drive and Canton Street. So that kind of bookends this project, and this would add another signal right in the middle, so from a traffic control standpoint, it, my gut tells me it's not really going to be warranted, but however, safety items are a definite must. We have the school right nearby, it's a very busy intersection and one that's difficult to navigate at, at this moment. So I fully expect GPI to examine that condition thoroughly and provide comments, and, and we'll get responses back from the applicant.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I wasn't trying to imply we should do all these things, but I know we haven't really touched upon this at all in our discussion so far, so I just want to make sure that it would be a rational response, similar to what you just kind of shared, but also their, their response to that. Thank you.
Yeah, that will probably be a focus of the next meeting, would be the, the peer review from the traffic consultant.
Okay. Okay. I'll open it up to the public.
Mr. Chairman, there is one person that's had their hand up online, I would like to let, let them recognize first, if that's okay?
Online?
Yeah, that's Marina R. Marina R. on, that's, that's on the Google meets? Okay, I guess she just clicked on it and didn't, so then yes. I just wanted to let the, the people online that had raised their hands early, so now, yeah, go ahead, since they're not responding, I'd say open it up to the public that's here.
Okay, well, at this time, I'll take people from the public. Please come up to the mic and use the mic, identify yourself, and I'll, one time up.
Oh, excuse me, this is Marina, I'm sorry, can I still talk or no? I missed.
She, she.
Yes, you can, you can make your comments, ma'am.
Yeah, I apologize, I, I just only have one question. You've mentioned before that you, your process to pick and choose applicants will be by the lottery. So if you people can express concern, concern in, do you think it makes more sense to pick and choose applicants by the application order which it was received than just the lottery? It's, it's a little confusing how you're going to pick and choose. I would assume that you receive application whether online or by mail, and each application would be in the system and get like ID or application ID, and it's going to be in numeric order, and that's how you choose people.
So thank you for that question. This is Deb Morse from Hebrew Senior Life responding. If we do it first come, first served, it really impairs the ability for many, particularly seniors, to have a fair chance. Some people have a hard time completing an application, some people might have a hard time dropping it off. And so what we do is we provide a period of time for which people can, and we also have many training sessions where we work with people around filling out the application. And that way, everybody has sort of the same amount of time to complete an application and get it into this lottery process. After we do the lottery, which is also a public process, we meet individually with each applicant and really work through their own private, personal documentation to make sure that they are in fact eligible to live in the new community, and we assist them in any way we can, including for people who, who may not speak English as their first or second language. So we want to provide as many accommodations as possible to attract as many people, particularly from Stoughton, to apply to live in the new community, and it just, it first come, first served doesn't, it will benefit a very few people, but it will not benefit the majority of seniors who would be interested in applying.
Thank you. In other words, you know, people have different priorities, whether it's income-driven or other priorities, like they need, in need to have a roof.
Yes, and we want to provide the accommodations to, to meet everybody where they are.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Peter and Tresco, 587 Canton Street. I grew up in Stoughton most of my life, and I'm probably the only one in this building that really knows that piece of property going back almost 90 years. And I was a working dairy farm for a lot of years, and the whole 50-yard acres was pasture and hayfields. It wasn't a quagmire like it is today, that was done by neglecting of the property. And it wasn't that far back when they were out there drilling observation wells to check on the contamination groundwater, bedrock, and, and at that time, the kids up until about 20 years ago were riding through there with ATCs all over the place, because it wasn't the mess that it's in now. So I mentioned this the last time, if this project is to go through, I'm not saying they do it in this phase where they're talking about maybe building on the, the rest of the property, have the nine acres you guys brought up before. I would like to see that land all reclaimed, so it's back to where it was originally, dry land, and they can have walking trails there for the elderly and park benches. So I would like that to be into the master plan. All right, as far as traffic goes, Chairman's here probably as long as I've been coming to these meetings over the 40Bs, and the traffic was always a big issue, so we always had traffic studies, and I was always concerned with it because I lived down there. And when they did Buckley Road, there was no change in the traffic flow, the traffic, the. And, okay, I'm going to skip the nine acres of what they're going to do later on, but it's a good idea to get a master plan of the whole project, what they plan to do further down the line. But what's preventing them from coming back, say, five, 10 years, and they want to add the other three stories that they're eliminating today? Is that going to be written in law that they cannot come back and do that? That it has to stay as a three-story? They can't come back and say, we want to permit to go up to the other three stories and we end up with a six, which is, it's not a good idea for the neighborhood? Okay, and 40B, I was always against it because all the 40Bs we have, it's just a nightmare for the police department to go. You need the cruisers down there constantly all night long. But this particular 40B, I was against it before because it was six stories, but when they cut it down to three, I could look favorably on this because it's going to be, I don't know if it's 55 or 60 older, so there's not going to be people in a younger age that are going to be doing drugs like in some of the elderly complexes here down like at, back at Paige's store. I talked to some of the elderly women in there, they're afraid to go out in the halls because of the young guys that are on drugs. So in the long haul, I think I'm going to be in favor of this one because it's a 40B that's under control and it's for the elderly, so I don't think there's any crazy elderly out there that are going to be moving in there. And, but if this doesn't go through, I'm looking ahead. If some, they sell the land, some other developer comes in, he might want to put a regular 40B. And then if, I think in 2029, I think you said some of these 40Bs are coming off the road and that opens the door for a developer to put a regular 40B and now we got troubled people and more headaches for the police department. That being said, they brought it down from six to four, so I can, I can live with it, much as I hate to say that, but I can. Now, the young lady over there, she raised a lot of nice questions here, but I heard a vapor barrier pertaining to what, under the building, so if there's any chemicals, they're not going to come up? All right, besides the vapor barrier, you're going to have some kind of a foot crushed on there with some kind of pipes to vent anything underneath the vapor barrier to escape into the air. Is that what this plan on doing?
Kenneth, do you want to talk about that?
That would be typical of a radon evacuation.
Yeah, but we're not talking about, excuse me, we're not talking about radon, we're talking possibly industrial chemicals, dangerous chemicals.
Yeah, we'll have to see what the environmental report comes back with.
All right, thank you very much for having me and I'm sure this board will do the right thing when the time comes. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
I can't, what's the issue? I have a question on disabilities. I'm extremely concerned from what I'm seeing is not going to meet ADA requirements for parking or living. And I've visited two of their sites. I'm very pleased with this organization. I want it to stay at three stories, though. And also, I'd like to see it not dump their traffic onto 27. I'd like to see it go down to the side street and utilize some of the other side streets to alleviate the traffic. I ride my trike around there all the time, little incumbent bike, and it's a very dangerous intersection. It's adjacent to a school, two schools, and there are children that come out that street there, and I don't think coming out onto 27 would be the best idea. Adding another light would not help that, that location, in my opinion. I've only lived here 40 years, not as long as the previous speaker. I also am very concerned, I am still on a PIP email, not a mail, I get registered letters. The plumes are still coming, we had six plumes coming toward the Pratt's Court well. I live on Pratt's Court. I happen to know that I have not seen any EPA or DEP letters saying that this site is clean. I will not, will not allow, and I will fight this to my death, that land to be built until it's totally cleaned and told, it's totally cleaned by the EPA and the DEP. I don't care what their studies say. They have not done land, water, or air studies. They did visual. And until I die, I will stand there and I will block any bulldozer until I hear from the EPA and the DEP that it's clean. And if you people vote this in without those documents, shame on you. You'll go to hell. Thank you.
Anybody else something? Hearing none or seeing none? What's the wish of the board?
Go ahead.
So I think, you know, we're at the point now, as we heard, we expect to get our responses into the town next week in response to the technical review memo, hopefully. If we also have the traffic peer review by the beginning of the week, albeit it's Fourth of July week, but we'll at least have a chance to start the process of responding to those issues as well. Obviously, we need to continue tonight's hearing. It was suggested to me earlier tonight that the next available meeting of the board was not going to be until August 29th. That's actually nine weeks from tonight. I understand the board has a meeting on July 18th. I also understand you have a fairly busy agenda for that meeting, but I also understand, as do you folks, that hearings often get continued for any number of reasons and don't go forward. I would really like to see if we could get on the agenda for the July 18th meeting to keep this process moving along. That's still almost four weeks away. The other thing, you know, your August 29th meeting, if that were the day you were to keep, it's just a week before you get back to your regular first and third, Thursday schedule starting in September on September 5th. So it just, you know, the nine-week delay, just to me, frankly, just, I don't think is reasonable. So we'd really like to see if we could keep this process moving forward. You know, we're confident, as Paula and Deb have mentioned, that the comments that we received from Bill and Craig, you know, we're going to be able to respond to those comments next week. I think, as was suggested, you know, if we have the peer review, have an opportunity to review that prior to the July 18th meeting, I think a lot of the issues we've heard tonight related to both parking and traffic will be addressed in GPI's peer review and therefore we can address those issues at that July 18th meeting. So I would respectfully request, if at all possible, that the hearing be continued to that July 18th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, you have four items on the agenda. So I'm just letting you know, that's what Kristen told me this morning. So it's the pleasure of the board, but there are, there's four new ones, so.
We can put it down, but only if we can have time for it. Because if we don't have time, it's going to have to go to August, whether we like it or not. Unfortunately, we've had problems with the board members.
I understand.
So if the board wishes, we can put it down for July 13th.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. And if we have time, we will do it.
What are the cases?
They're all new.
I don't have, there are new cases, I don't have the names of the cases, I just have the streets, so I don't know what they are.
May I just, I feel like that's not fair also to all these residents to, I don't know, I'm not trying to be difficult, Barry, but we're a lean board at the moment.
I understand.
And we're trying to find ways, that's why we did this meeting two weeks in a row, because we have, you know, people have been pretty dedicated to this board who also have other obligations to take care of, so. I just don't see, I mean, I hear your point that maybe those four cases don't go forward, but then if they do and people are showing up, that's just not fair to them. We have a, this is largely, this is probably one of our largest populated meetings and I don't see that changing at the next one, so I guess I would be more inclined to just put this on for August. It doesn't prohibit you from going back and forth a few times?
No, I understand. Is it possible, if July 18th is not a possibility, is it possible to add another meeting sometime between the 18th and the August 29th date, so we don't have to wait nine weeks?
People are all away.
Pardon me?
People are away. That's why we had to go to the 29th.
We're not going to have four.
Okay.
That's the problem. We kept looking at it.
So, could, I think the chairman's suggestion was if we put it on for the 18th and if those hearings were to all go forward, we recognize that we may get continued without having the ability to introduce any testimony that evening. Is that an issue? We obviously need to be continued to a date certain.
I mean, again, I'm just going back to the fact that we have a lot of residents here, so they would be planning for this and then they wouldn't know until, even if you submitted a letter that night, you really wouldn't know until that day. And that just seems, I understand what you're doing, I think that people understand we're not trying to be difficult, but it just doesn't give a good impression.
Right, and I also just think out of respect for your own workloads for this, not just your other life, but for this, we should just, I appreciate what we're trying to do, but I think we should just concede and assume that we will be here on August 29th and that there'll be a lot of work that has, will have undertaken between us and Craig and Bill between now and then, so that on the 29th, in the ideal scenario, we have, you have complete responses that have been acceptable to staff for all the technical issues, all your, all the questions that came up today. I would like for us to be able to be in a position to try and get approval on the 29th or if it needs to be September 5th. But in terms of applying to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for additional funding that we need, having ZBA approval is going to be critical towards the end of the summer or the beginning of September.
Based on my client's comments, I'll rescind my request.
August 29th.
Pete's got a question.
Like they have, my neighbor Karen Clip had to say about the chemicals.
No, no.
Oh, no, it's all, oh, okay, okay. I just wanted to take different readings.
It's on next time.
Just to continue.
Motion to continue case number 4299, August 29th, 2024, at 7:32 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You'll have all the material to us, right?
Thank you very much.
At least two weeks before. Thanks. You too. I'll entertain a motion.
Wait, don't we have, don't we have an extension for case 4290?
Oh, yeah, we have an extension.
Hold on.
You have an extension request? You're right.
I did it.
No, for a variance on Pond.
Pondview Lane.
View Lane. Forgot about that.
This, this letter.
Draw my second.
That's another one of Barry's.
No, I'm not on that one. I've been replaced by a project engineer.
Might I borrow this?
It's a letter that came in our packet.
Okay.
I didn't start writing on that.
I guess I have to make a motion to open case number 4290.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Nicole Langley, I'm an associate with High Point Engineering representing the applicant Roger Sherman, excuse me.
What is it?
I have it, you just have to find it. And we were before this board in January of 2022, excuse me, January 2023, for a variance for Lot 1 at the end of Pondview Lane in Stoughton. The reason for the variance had to do with the irregular shape of the lot, large ledge outcrops throughout the property, and an extensive wetland system in the back of the property. Prior to coming to the ZBA, we were before the Conservation Commission, and part of the Conservation Commission restrictions included the issuance of a conservation restriction for the property, which required that approximately 75% of the property would be restricted as conservation land and would remain non-billable. The rest of the property, we were able to propose the construction of a single-family home with a permeable paved driveway and sidewalk that extended out to Pondview Lane. Once the order of conditions was issued for the, the property, excuse me, the conservation restriction was issued into that as special condition number 28B, and it further stated that the conservation restriction is to be fully executed and recorded at the Norfolk Registry of Deeds prior to occupancy. The special condition further stated that the conservation restriction is intended to be reviewed and approved by the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs through the Department of Conservation Services. The language of the conservation restriction was reviewed by the Conservation Commission locally and then submitted to the Department of Conservation Services in January of 2023. They have yet to approve the language of the conservation restriction, which is hindering the applicant's ability to exercise the variance. He is eager and ready to do so. He has actually had two candidates requesting to purchase the property, but without the certainty of the restrictions of the Conservation Commission, they both walked away. So I'm here today, actually about a month ago, when we saw that the extension was getting ready to expire, I reached out to the Stoughton Building Commissioner, Jack Erickson, and had a discussion with him on this issue and how to move forward. He deferred to Town Council and got back to me and recommended that we come before this board to request an additional extension, which would allow the DCS further time to approve the final conservation restriction. As of January 25th earlier this week, I received an email from the applicant's attorney stating that he had a discussion with the DCS and they had a request to revise some of the language associated with Lot 1. And once that language was revised, they would be ready to submit it for final approval and sign off. So we're getting close. I believe, I was told that the revised language was to be submitted to the DCS today, so I will keep on top of that process. But based on this issue, the extensive process, and my client's willingness to move forward, we would like to request an additional extension if possible.
Okay, what's the wish of the board?
I mean, based on Town Council's recommendation, then I'm, feel that, and I, it sounds like they have a reason to want further extension. I'm not positive you can get a second extension, but I honestly didn't have time to search that today.
I thought you could only get one extension.
But Town Council said that, so that's where I, you know, I just didn't have a chance to. this board to request some additional extension, which would allow the DCS further time to approve the final conservation restriction. As of January 25th earlier this week, I received an email from the applicant's attorney stating that he had a discussion with the DCR, DCS, and they had a request to revise some of the language associated with Lot 1. And once that language was revised, they would be ready to submit it for final approval and sign off. So we're getting close. I believe, I was told that the revised language was to be submitted to the DCS today, so I will keep on top of that process. But based on this issue, the extensive process, and my client's willingness to move forward, we would like to request an additional extension if possible.
Okay. What's the wish of the board?
I mean, based on Town Council's recommendation, then I'm, feel that, and I, it sounds like they have a reason to want further extension. I'm not positive you can get a second extension, but I honestly didn't have time to search that today.
I thought you could only get one extension.
But Town Council said that, so that's where I, you know, I just didn't have a chance to look at it today. That was the only surprise I had with this. So if it's void because it's impossible to get, then you're going to need to take that risk and, and keep moving forward as quickly as you can. Because I'm just, again, I always thought you could only get one extension for a variance, but I would need to double-check that.
Yeah, and that, that was my understanding as well, which is why I reached out to the Building Commissioner, and, and he subsequently spoke to Town Council, and that was the recommendation.
Well, at least we have that in the record. So I don't have a problem making this motion. I just can't tell you that I necessarily know that it's going to be a valid action for you.
I appreciate that.
Actually, what we can do is make a motion to give them the extension pending Town Council's okay.
Sure, I'm fine with that. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve a second extension of the variance, conditioned upon Town Council's written confirmation that a second extension can be provided.
Second.
The, the extension's through January 19th, 2025.
Thank you. Through, I will modify my motion that way.
All right. You second that, Mike, Gary?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Sure.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.